All right, so we are live.
Lindsay, how are you? Richard on the other line with me and saying he did not get the link today. That's why he was late. Lindsay?
Yeah, um, just have him join the regular meeting and we'll promote him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then he joined the regular meeting and we promote you?
I can't get on my lift. I can't have the site or nothing.
Oh, because I'm, hold on.
Can I say that one?
No, wait, I don't know.
You want me to forward the email from Tanya from about an hour ago?
I think it's unique to you. I don't think anyone can open it, so.
Okay.
He can use the regular link.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Regular link that's online because if he needs to go to the city planning website page.
Roxanne.
I'll see what I can do. I'll try again. I'm trying, all right? I'll call you back if I can't get in a minute.
Okay, very good. Thank you. He will call me back if he couldn't get in.
We have seven, though.
Yes.
Right? So that's another option.
Yeah, let's just, let's go forward. So we're live, right?
Let me know when you're starting, Josh.
Okay, I'm starting. Good evening and welcome to the Jersey City zoning board of adjustment. This is our regularly scheduled meeting for September 10th, 2020. In accordance with the Senator Byron M. Bear Open Public Meeting Act of 2020, which explicitly permits a public body to conduct a meeting electronically during a state of emergency. We are coming to you via Zoom directly to your house rather than meeting at City Hall to conduct this meeting. Okay, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'm here. Mr. Chairman, I'm in.
Great. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, or Commissioner McCormick, sorry. With that, a call order and let's take the, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
See, without Richard, we will never see the flag.
Are there any sunshine announcements?
In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this hearing was given to the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the clerk, and we have the notices to be marked.
That'll be B1 in evidence for tonight.
Great. Okay, can we please take roll call?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Jamie?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner McCormick?
Here.
Commissioner Rothman?
Here.
Commissioner Shadid?
Here.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Here.
Chairman Jacobs?
Here.
So we have eight present, so I think typically we didn't want to, we don't want to have an even number. So.
I, I will be, I will be happy to not participate tonight just because I'm also not that well prepared tonight, so.
Okay.
That's, that's okay.
Well, I, I stated earlier about jumping off.
Oh, okay, or either way.
Good night, everybody.
Okay.
Okay. Bye, Nick. Is, well, before we proceed, is Vinnie on the call?
It looks like we lost him.
Okay. Well, what procedurally are, I mean, I don't know what, what the, what we are supposed to do or not do if we don't have our board counsel at the meeting.
Yeah, I don't think you can have a meeting without the counsel.
That was my thought.
Well, I don't know. Is he trying to sign back on? He, he said if anything, he would have had to have for him back into town. I don't know really where he is and how long that would take.
I don't know either. He stays in Block Island, so I mean, it's not a big place, but.
They banned the internet in Block Island.
Yeah, there might be poor Wi-Fi connection anywhere in Block Island.
I, yeah, and I also asked if he could call on, but he said that the phone is just as bad.
Okay.
With texting, same.
What, is there any, would there be a representative from his law firm who's not with him in Block Island?
Nope, his daughter is with him.
That was my question, okay.
His daughter is with him.
Okay. Well, I, I must, I mean, who is the planning board attorney?
Santo Alapi.
Would he be able to be a alternate for the evening if need be?
Um, I have to make some calls. Do you want to take a break?
I'll do whatever, whatever you think makes the most sense, but I think that we can't really proceed with any cases until we sort this out.
Yep. Um, let me, let me try to make a few calls.
So maybe pick a time to resume that we could tell the public, maybe about 7:30?
I think that's too late.
Well.
While, while we got to find an attorney, we're not going to be able to do that in a half hour.
Tanya, what do you think is a reasonable timeframe to sort out whether or not this works for Vinnie or we have alternate counsel? It's either going to be.
I'm not going to be able to call everybody and get everybody online by 7 o'clock.
You think 7 o'clock?
No, no, I don't think I'll be able to pull everybody together by 7 o'clock.
All right, so let's, let's, like, we'll, we'll get back on the record at 7:30. In the meantime, I mean, I normally would ask Vinnie these things. I, I think Bridget, we should probably.
I had Josh, Bridget, we should probably.
Well, I was going to see Lindsay, have you reached Vinnie?
Vinnie just raised his hand as an attendee, so I just promoted him to panel.
Oh, there he is.
And he's gone. Sorry. Sorry.
I ran out of quarters.
Okay. My, my suggestion, Bridget, although I don't know, you know, if we're not going to hear any cases, what, what to, if it mattered, but to get on the record who everyone is, if we should at least swear in staff and then discuss if there's been any correspondence and if there's any adjournments. So if there's anyone from the public listening, if they'll know that definitively their case wouldn't be heard tonight, even though good chance no case will be heard tonight, we at least could give them that heads up.
It's a good idea.
So let's, let's do a swearing of the staff, please.
Hey, raise your right hands. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, and we have Tanya, Lindsay, and Mallory.
Thank you. And has there been, is there any correspondence?
So as far as the agenda items go, so sorry, so item number nine, case Z19-069, address 91 to 93 Patterson Street, not being heard, they're not being carried, they'll, they'll notice again for a future meeting date.
Okay, is that the only case update?
Yes.
Okay, so anyone who, who's calling in, case Z19-069, the address is 91-93 Patterson Street. That case is not going forward today, and we don't know when it's necessarily going forward. It's not being carried to a date certain. We're going to be noticed, which means that it'll, it'll potentially be some future date, but at this point, we can't tell you definitively that it's going to be the next meeting in September or October. So with that, any, Lindsay, any update further from, from, from Vinnie?
No, I was giving him a call when his name popped up, so let me try him.
All right, why don't we take a five and see if we can sort this out, but then if, if this isn't resolved in five minutes, then we're just giving notice to the public that we're going to reconvene at 7:30. You know, hopefully by then we'll resolve that we have a board counsel.
We're off.
You got to tell.
Okay, we're, we're ready to be back on the record.
Okay.
All right, we're going to announce that we now have board counsel, Mr. Lapaglia, for the moment, is with us, so we're going to proceed with today's agenda. I don't know if people are calling in, but the first case was carried and we don't know till when. That's 91-93 Patterson Street, so we're going to proceed with case Z20-036. The address is 506-508 Central Avenue.
Chairman, I just promoted Jim Burke.
You're ready, send him out.
Hi.
Hello.
Oh, okay, finally. For some reason, I could not, I was being muted, I guess. This is Jim Burke. This has been quite an evening so far. I'm the attorney for the applicant, and we have two witnesses. I'll go as fast as possible since I see Vinnie is here now and he's connected. This matter had been approved at a prior hearing in 2018, but it consisted of 20 residential units, 10 parking spaces, and commercial space on the ground floor. A permit was pulled to demolish the building, which was formerly known as the Sea Town supermarket, and during that demolition and excavation, it was determined by the civil engineer representing my client that there was concerns about the adjacent building and what might happen to the underpinning of that building. So the foundation had to be redesigned, and that was at a considerable expense. So the client had to pull back and decide how to proceed. So it was determined the way to do this to offset the cost of that foundation was to increase the density from 20 to 25 units, which is what is before you tonight. During this process, there were meetings held with community representatives, neighborhood associations, and Councilman Yun, and the suggestion came up to dedicate some of the units to affordability, affordable units. So that was agreed to by the applicant, so two of the five units that are being proposed as additional density are in fact dedicated for affordability. So with that being said, the building mass has not changed. The size of the building is the same. The units are basically the unit, one bedroom, two bedroom. That changed a bit, and Mr. Levine, who's the first witness, will discuss that a little. But basically, the, the unit count is, is at 25 with, with a bigger number of one-bedroom units and studios and a fewer two-bedroom units, and, and that's basically it. I will introduce Mr. Levine if he's on, and we can have him sworn in by counsel or Bridget and proceed.
Mr. Burke, can you have your experts raise their hands?
I don't see them. That's one thing, I don't see them yet.
Hey, Jim, can you hear me? This is Vinnie.
I can, I can, Benny.
Jim, can you hear me? This is Vinnie Lapaglia.
I can.
I, I think we, we should mark your notices. I, let's do that, Bridget. I, I've lost the, the, the video part of my Zoom here, so I can just hear you, and hopefully you can hear me. So as long as we can mark your notices and you agree, your witnesses sworn in remotely, let's go forward.
Okay, we did, we submitted notice earlier today to Mallory, and I think she has everything she needs. So we can mark, you want to enter that? I don't know how you.
She does, and we just want to mark them A1.
Okay.
Okay, one moment.
Bridget has them as well, and I've reviewed them.
All right, that's sure.
And this will be A1 in evidence.
Okay, great.
And Jim, do you agree to have your witnesses sworn remotely?
Yes, I do.
Hey, Mr. Levine, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and you have to unmute yourself? Jim, here, you have to unmute yourself.
Lee, you're on mute.
I do.
Oh, there you go. Excellent.
Okay.
All right, so, Lee, you, you've been sworn in remotely, and I'd like you to proceed and just focus on the changes from the prior approval to what is being proposed tonight.
And, and Mr. Levine, we continue to accept your qualifications.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, let's, can, can we share the screen now? So I'm, I'm going to not spend a lot of time on the title sheet. You've all looked at this for a number of times. What I will do is, one sec. Yeah, it's okay. What I will do is go through. I need to. Sorry, didn't know how to do this yet. Anyway, these two charts show that all of the gross areas and all of the studio and bedrooms and counts. So what I have here, which is very similar to the original application, we have a first-floor retail restaurant space fronting on Central. We have, where are my members? Sorry, guys, I'm confused with this too for a minute. So we have 25 units now where we had 20. And our count per floor, I'm still trying to. Yeah. And for a second. Here we are. So we have 25 DUs. Can I pull that over that way? Yeah. That's it. So we have nine studios. We have 11 one-bedrooms. I'll show you them in plan. We have two-bedroom, two-bedroom units are five, so that's a 25 dwelling unit count total. We go down to the next, of the next chart. We have the gross areas, and it's a wide range on studios and one- and two-bedrooms. Some are very, very spacious, some are very small. We do have two affordable units that have been identified. And we have about 31,569 square feet of gross area, including the retail and restaurant space. If we can move down from here. Okay, so this drawing is a little bit different from what you've seen before because you will see that there's a dashed set of lines that pull back from Central Avenue. That's because the own, the, the four buildings on the four corners are, yeah, I can do this now. So this building, which is the bike shop, and these yards, which are above grid, and this building, which is a residential building, and these two buildings are also significant structures, and we had to pull back away and do helical piles and foundation walls. We are permitted and under construction right now for the foundations. So that, we are going ahead with the project right now. It's already permitted. We paid about $6,000 of fees to JCMUA and the Sewage Authority. My client wasn't thrilled with that, but there we are. As per the original plans, we were putting in street trees on both sides of the NC and R1 borders. And if you go to the site in the next couple of days, you will see that a tremendous amount of foundation work is taking place, but I will show you why we can't get as many parking spaces. So these photos show you a couple of five-story buildings. There are a couple of five-story buildings around Central and Cambridge. You'll see the bike shop waterproof thing, and you will, this is still before demolition, these photos. The reason I wanted you to see this, if I can do this for a minute, is these windows here are very important for this four-story condo residential building, which is also this same structure. The others are smaller, but all of them needed anything from underpinning to new foundation walls. And if I come to the next plan now, which should be the basement parking plan, oh, no, we got some more photos for you. I thought I took more out, but so I got a backup one. That's, yeah, no. I'm not used to a Mac. So what you see here is you see that same horseshoe that we pulled away from the bike shop, the condo, and this is the basement plan. Now with this basement plan, we have, we have an ADA space, an ADA aisle. We have one, two, three, four spaces. We have 22 bikes, but we have the opportunity for two tandem spaces. And since we've done a number of projects with a wheel, where you drive in onto the wheel and you pre-program the way the radius turns, and you can maneuver cars in different ways. So there's a chance that we can get seven full spaces, but we will only commit at the moment for five. We've got to see if we can work with the owner so that if, if an apartment that's a two-bedroom and maybe wants two cars, maybe they can do tandem. We can't get more than seven. Originally, we had 10, but that was when this entire foundation wall was completely repaired and replaced. You've seen this diagram before for the most part. You've got the two stairs, you've got the elevator. You can come down to the ground floor level and go out to Cambridge. You can come up via elevator or stairs and come out to Central. The dashed lines we're pointing right now are at the elevation above. Right? Yeah. So the ground floor, this is the ground floor. We did the street trees, we've done all the, the CID issues. We have a large commercial space. We're all hoping that it's going to become a cafe or a restaurant or something more vibrant than just retail. The CID, 450 CID members weighed in on this, and they were all hoping that why we wanted a canopy was so that those bifold doors in the front could give outdoor seating and cafe appearance. So you have a kitchen area, two bath, two bedroom, I'm sorry, two unisex toilets, one bedroom, one bedroom will go up. Which is, where's the? Everything's backwards to me here. So once you get up to the second floor, you have a long corridor. You've got two stairs, you've got an elevator. Downstairs on the ground floor, there's a large postal area for packages. Again, you see one bedroom, one, a two-bedroom, a two-bedroom, and a one-bedroom. And that kind of repeats itself on the way up, and you see the two affordable units. You see the two affordable units here and here, and this is a setback of five foot one, which allows windows to the property line, and this side of the building also set back five foot one because there are windows on the condominium. So we did a lot to create light and air for the number of units we have. I can go up another one. This, again, these two studios are similar, but they're not affordable. The mixes is pretty solid. As I showed you before, you've got ones, twos, and a fair number of studios. So there had been, at this level, this was two private terraces with a treatment of trellises, and we thought that was the right thing to do for the Cambridge community. But in fact, we added back into the bedroom suites, and the community didn't want anything any taller on that side anyway. And you'll see that in a minute. So again, you've got a couple of twos, ones. They're all spacious. They're all fully ADA accessible. And you see the rooftop is almost 40.
You're breaking up, Lee.
I had here where.
Lee, hold up.
I'm sorry.
You're breaking up. They're all fully ADA accessible, and you'll see the rooftop is almost what? You broke up there.
Okay, it's about 45% green roof, and the rest of the roof is condensing units and some mechanical equipment in case there's a restaurant. We did place on the north side, you'll see two large ducts that will eventually supply restaurant exhaust and garage exhaust. So these are renditions. I will show you the color renditions. But I'd like to just make sure you understand, the ground floor here has a main entry to Central, and anyone in the building who's going to grab a bus is going to come down and out through that port.
Yeah, you're.
Each sets of doors and the can. Am I off again?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll show you the rendering, but on the backside, you'll also see how we brought the three-story elements that's more similar with the rest of the height of Cambridge.
Lee, Lee, I just want to interrupt for a second. What I'd like you to do is just focus on any change from the last application. For example, you've said the parking is gone from 10 to 5, maybe 7 based on tandem. The trellis has been removed, correct? Was there any change to the front facade? I mean, because if it was the same, let's not talk about it. If it, if it's changed at all, then tell the board what the change was.
You'll see it in just one moment. Sorry. We'll dump these sections for a minute, and I'll show you the rendering of both facades. And that's probably the best way to do it. Am I talking too much? Am I talking too much? Here we go. You don't have to look at the Sewage Authority info, but... One more. So that's the front facade. The front facade has the canopy, has the brick. It's the same brick samples that we submitted three years ago. What we did do, that's a little different, is we kept the canopy and used cables instead of some of the fins that we had on the prior... But actually, Councilman Yun and David Diaz really wanted these cornice treatments. And I'm pleased with that. There's one more. And that's the rendered version for the garage side. This side is for entry and egress for passengers, for pedestrians, for guests. There's another access set of doors here because we do have recycling over in that part of the garage. So seven cars might be too much, but five is absolutely what's on the plan. I hope I didn't do that too quickly.
No, no. That was, thank you, Lee. So in essence, the facade basically changed very little except for what you described. Parking was reduced by a few spots. The unit count went from 20 to 25. You identified the two affordable units in the building. And the trellis on the backside has been eliminated. So the slight design change as a result, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Would you like, would the board like to ask Lee questions? Or should I bring the next witness and then ask both at the same time? How would you like to proceed?
We're going to hold all questions until the end. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So the next witness then will be Ed Colling, the planner. And I'm going to note before Ed begins, because as Mallory noted, this is a new application, we have to ask for the same variance relief again, even though most of the variances, except for the parking variance, increased in some intensity. All the other variances had been granted. But nonetheless, for the record, we have to put Mr. Colling on and have him proceed as if, because it is a new application. Thank you. Okay. Now, is Edward there?
Oh, yes, okay.
I'm here.
Ed, would you raise your right hand to be sworn? Do you swear or affirm the testimony or vows given this proceeding would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you accept him as a witness as well, an expert in planning.
Yes, we accept Mr. Colling's qualifications. Thank you.
I'll put on the record that my license is still valid and in full force and effect as a professional planner. So I'll just go through this relatively quickly. I think Lee described that the building is fairly close to the same, the same size, the same scale. And we have five parking spaces now. The issue with the five parking spaces, I'll just touch quickly on that and then I'll probably go through it in testimony as well. But it was an amendment to the NC district last November. And when that happened, the parking requirement was reduced. So although we have five spaces instead of 10, the level of the variance actually went down. Back two, three years ago, we needed 20 spaces. Under today's standards, we only need six spaces. So we actually have five spaces. We're only one space short. And there is the possibility, as Lee said, of adding the two tandem spaces. So the variance, although still asking for it, is actually reduced from a variance for 10 spaces to a variance for one space. Similarly, in terms of the height, we are asking for a height variance in the NC district, where we didn't ask for one in the past. The building is not getting any taller. It's simply that when the amendment was made, they put a cap of 55 feet with the five stories. Before, it was simply five stories and there was no maximum in the height. It was regulated by the board of floor heights. Because 55 feet was, came in, we're now a few feet over that 55 feet. So we're asking for the height variance. So that's a matter of explanation as to those particular variances. We know where the property is. It's at the northern end of Central Avenue. It was developed with a Sea Town. It was a supermarket for decades. The commercial aspects grunted onto Central Avenue. You had loading and all kinds of other things happening on the Cambridge side, which were inconsistent with the residential character. This development will remove those back-of-house operations and just as the previous project did. So again, this project, and as you can see in this rendering here, now the rear of the building is going to look like a residential building. In fact, it is a residential building and that's more consistent with that character. So in the R1 district, we're asking for the use variance because this development is permitted in the NC district. And 60% of this lot is in the NC district. It's a split-zone lot. Only 40% is in the R1. We need the maximum building height because in the R1 zone, it's 35, 39 feet, you know, and we're about 62 feet. So that variance remains the same, but it's consistent with the NC heights. And that's why the building is taller because we're primarily in the NC zone. Building coverage is at 100%, as is the lot coverage, which would also be a variance in the R1 zone. But that's how it's been for decades. As I mentioned, the Sea Town was on the site, covered the 100% of the site and had those sort of obnoxious elements of its use on that side. And the other variance here is simply about the lot, the driveway width. For a typical R1, one- or two-family home, the driveway width can only be 10 feet. We're asking for 12 feet because there's a few more cars going in and out of here. And I think that it's a better approach to design. It's safer, provides for a little bit more visibility if we go to a 12-foot lot width. So that's also a variance. As I mentioned, we have the NC district now with the height. 55 is permitted. The building is 62 feet, the same as it is on the R1 side. But at the curb line, we're only at about 59 feet. And that's because the building or the lot slopes from Central to Cambridge. And because we're a through lot, we have to average the curb height at Cambridge and the curb height at Central. So that becomes a sort of a hardship in terms of topography. And the parking variance I already went through. In terms of the use variance, I think the subject property is particularly well-suited for the proposed use. It's primarily in the NC district where it's permitted. So the mixed-use building is a permitted use and more consistent with the character of Central Avenue. The predominant, the 60% of the lot is in the NC area. And I think we've added the residential elements to the back that mitigate any negative impact of having this mixed-use building extending into the R1 zone. Conversely, the site is not well-suited for the R1 development. The lot depth from the Cambridge in these R1 zone is only about 48 feet. It would be difficult to develop that. If you extended it into the NC zone, we'd be asking for a use variance anyway. And I think that would be more detrimental to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and what the city's trying to accomplish in rejuvenating Central Avenue at any rate. So, and a hardship can arise in terms of a use variance. Most of the time, we look at use variance proofs as being looking for the positive criteria and how we advance the purposes of the municipal land use law. However, hardship can also be a criteria for use. And that's what we're dealing with here because of the split-zone nature of this particular lot. And I believe Mallory covers that as well in her report. If you look at what would be the substantial detriment to the public good or general welfare in doing, granting this use variance, I really don't see any because the development is completely in character with Central Avenue and what the zone plan has in trying to implement for Central Avenue. On the R1 side as well, we're removing a lot of the impacts of the previous commercial use by this plan, just as the previous plan did, and making it more residential in character. So I think it really is more consistent with the intent and purpose of the zone plan as well as more positive in terms of the impacts on both the commercial side of the property and on the residential property, size of property. The height variance, I've gone through the explanation of why we need that. I think the site can accommodate the additional height without substantial detriment, in part because of the size of the property. It's well over 6,000 square feet, which is well over the 2,500 square feet that you would typically find. You have the hardship of the sloping site so that by averaging the two curb heights, you end up triggering that height variance. It's really consistent with what was previously approved. It's still a five-story building along Central Avenue, I'm sorry. And that is a permitted height in terms of number of stories. And we've reduced the height along Cambridge, the three stories, which is what you'd expect there, and set the building back. So I think in terms of looking at the mitigation that's been done or the impact of the height variance, it reduces any detriment. So I don't see any substantial detriment to the public good, general welfare, or to the intent of the zone plan from that variance as well. Building lot coverage, I've kind of described that. I'll just go through it quickly. It's no worse, in fact, a little bit better than it previously was because of the through-lot condition. You're going, you really have two fronts. You don't have a rear. So when you have those minimal setbacks, which are permitted on both properties, naturally, you're going to end up with 100% lot coverage. Again, it's not consistent with what was there before. We've stepped the building in in little places on the upper levels, as Lee had described, that provides enough air and light to the windows of adjoining buildings and provides enough air and light to this particular building. Parking variance I've already described. Although the number of spaces has been reduced, it really has reduced the size of the variance though as well because of the change in the criteria. So I think the granting that variance is really de minimis and can be offset both by the fact that there's substantial public transportation in the area, about a half-mile walk to the light rail, and the fact that we could actually mitigate this as well by the addition of the tandem spaces. The other thing is that on the back end of the property, when it was functioning as a loading zone and everything, you really couldn't park there at all because of the trash, because of the loading areas and things like that. Now you simply have a 12-foot curb cut so that there's really additional curbside parking that could be available. And that's really a benefit to the entire community. And I think the other substantial benefit is that although we're asking for the five additional units, we're not really triggering any density variance. There's no density requirement, density requirements in either the R1 or the NC. But in asking for it and in discussions with the community and with the SID and with the councilmen, two of those five will be designated as affordable housing. They will be dedicated for 30 years. And that, I think, is a substantial benefit in and of itself. So when you look at how we promote the purposes of the municipal land use law, we have, we're going to create a new attractive mixed-use building that's in keeping with the character of Central Avenue. We're going to improve the character of the residential neighborhood along Cambridge. We're going to be providing ADA units and affordable housing units. So I think that promotes the public safety and the general welfare consistent with paragraph 2A. We're promoting the appropriate population density, notwithstanding the fact that we're asking for the additional units. We're not asking for any density variances. And I think the additional units and population would help support the commercial aspects of Central Avenue. We're providing sufficient space in an appropriate location for this type of mixed-use building. It's a larger lot, it is a lone commercial area of Central Avenue. It fits in well with the character of the area. It promotes a desirable visual environment. Even when the Sea Town was still there, it was, as I said, there for decades, it was getting kind of old, a little tired. And now the vacant lot, obviously, is not what you want to see there. So this building is going to be a good addition to the streetscape. And the proposed development does promote the conservation of energy resources and natural resources, prevents urban sprawl. And that is because of the concentration of the density where it should be, but as well because of using the green development approaches. And last but not least, the affordable housing can be looked at in sort of an inherently beneficial way. So I think, to summarize, I think we've met the proofs for the D1 and the D6 variance for use and for height. I think the C variances can be granted both because of the hardship of the through-lot condition and the sloping topography. But also, I think the benefit of this project would substantially outweigh any detriment. And it could be granted also under the C2. And that concludes my testimony.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ed. Chairman, we'll turn it to you for questions from the board.
Thank you. I think first, I'm going to see quickly, are there any people, anyone here from the community who has any questions or comments on this application? Lindsay, is there anybody here? Everybody's in Block Island with poor reception.
Looks that way. So if you're on your computer, you could toggle down to the bottom of your screen and hit raise hand if you have a question or a comment. And if you're calling in, you would dial star nine. Yes, you would dial star nine to raise your hand if you're calling in. But I don't see any hands raised at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Then we're going to close the public portion of the application. Are there any questions or comments from the board at this time? Okay, does staff have any comments? Mallory, I think you're now on...
I'm just going to share my screen really quick just to run through the staff report.
Excuse me, Lindsay, one moment. I was muted, I was trying to get a question in real quick.
Go ahead, Rich.
I'm sorry, real quick for Mr. Burke. I was just concerned about one thing. Under the circumstances, you didn't speak with Mr. Young and David in the past. Was any of this brought up to the SID or the present council person at this time? The new council person?
To my knowledge, it was not brought up to the new council person, but I believe Mr. Levine can talk about the SID. I remember being a part of meetings earlier on regarding this, but maybe, Lee, you can weigh in on that?
I mean, just real quickly, I mean, that's, you know, it's not major, big thing, but I just wanted to see if the SID was updated with the different things because there's a new plan and everything going through with us right now. So just a real quick synopsis, please.
Well, I can tell, Mr. Commissioner McCormick, I was there at a meeting with Councilman Yun and the SID representative. There may have been subsequent meetings that I did not attend, but I was at one where both parties were there.
But if I could just interrupt for a second. During my last discussion with David Diaz and Councilman Yun, before Councilman Yun passed, we had quite a discussion about maintaining the canopy and maintaining what he arm-wrestled us for, which is the cornice treatment because he felt that was very important. And David Diaz wrote, if I can find the email, it was a couple of years ago. David wrote me back saying he was very pleased and thank you for the 450 members of the SID. I specifically...
Hi, Mr. Levine.
Yep.
No disrespect, no disrespect. Since you have upgraded and made changes to the plan, my simple question, yes or no, was they involved in any of the changes that were made to this plan right now?
I think the only change is the number of units.
No, the question, though, Lee, is where they consulted. And my understanding is they were. I was at one of the meetings where there are subsequent meetings where these plans and designs were shown.
Because we're talking two years already now. You know, that's why my concern is, that's all.
Lee, I understand is that when, my understanding is when we spoke earlier, that you had said that the plan showing the additional five units was discussed with both the RNA and with the SID and with Councilman Yun. And that is how you came to the decision that there would be two of the units being affordable. So that the, what, I think what Commissioner McCormick is asking is that was the amended plan that changed the parking from 10 to 5 and that changed the unit count from 20 to 25 also discussed. And I believe that was the case because how else did we arrive at the two affordable units if it wasn't with the agreement with the RNA and with the councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Colling. That's it.
Okay. Thanks, Rich. Are there any other questions at this time from the board? Thanks, Rich. Are there any other questions at this time from the board? Otherwise, we can proceed to staff and then anyone can ask any questions at that point after staff report.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Okay, so I sent this out earlier, but I just want to go through. Most of what I touch on here is consistent with Mr. Collin's testimony. Case law does recognize a split zone law as a hardship. So in evaluating this, really what we're looking at is that there have been efforts made on the R1 side of the zone or the site to respond to the existing context. And the granting of the use variance is not going to contrast the purposes of the MLUL or the zone. So quickly, I think this does meet several purposes of the MLUL, including establishment of appropriate densities and concentrations. I think this is a really appropriate site as a through lot and just as a larger lot on Central Ave for a multifamily building. Like I said, the density that's proposed here tonight is compliant under NC standards. It's really just the R1 side that the multifamily use is not permitted. However, I would like to draw attention to this map here. This property is actually only six lots away from Washington Park, which serves both Jersey City and Union City. And another purpose of the MLUL, which I think could be touched on here is to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities shaping land development with a view of lessening the cost of such development and to the more efficient use of land. And really, what I think is of note here is that establishing appropriate densities in a close proximity of such robust public infrastructure such as an open space like Washington Park, which is actually 22-acre site of almost entirely active recreation. So this, I think this is a completely appropriate density within proximity of both a major bus route on Central Avenue and existing major public infrastructure from an open space standpoint. Moving along to the height variance. Really, I don't think there's much question of whether the site can accommodate the height. It's a very oversized lot at over 6,000 square feet. And there have been steps taken to really alleviate the bulk on the R1 side, including the step back from the third, fourth and fifth story of 10 feet, which allows a consistent street wall from an urban design standard with the surrounding R1 context on Cambridge Avenue. But it also provides more light and air to the adjacent buildings. So I think it kind of, you get two benefits with the one move of that 10-foot step back on those upper levels there. So that addresses really that they're responding to the context in that the property is abutted by a two-story residential building to the south and a two-and-a-half-story structure to the north. And they are stepping back at about 28 feet in height. And from there, the top three stories continue that step back. And again, that just also helps alleviate any issues with light and air and allows the neighboring properties to feel a little less enclosed in on. And then again, purposes of zoning, I think, just in line with good urban design. This promotes a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Moving to the C variances, so this is, you know, a unique site with this split zone where there's a D height variance and then also a C height variance, just because as Ed covered, we did recently amend the NC zoning to actually put a numeric restriction on the height. I think the height, the deviation at the curb line is about a little over four and a half feet. I think it's de minimis and since that numeric restriction is so new to the zone, I don't think there's any detriment to public welfare safety as we've been approving properties along Central Ave at a height identical or higher to this for several years now. So I don't think it's going to be out of context, nor do I think it's going to cause substantial detriment in relation to other approvals on the corridor. Other than that, I just wanted to ask Mr. Burke two things that I would like to verify, which are, I just want to verify that for the two proposed affordable units, that all the finishes will be consistent with the finishes of the market rate units?
Confirmed.
Okay, and then I just wanted to confirm that you have been, you have started coordinating with Gigi Gazan, who's our new director of the new Division of Affordable Housing in establishing an affordable housing agreement for those units. I did receive correspondence from her, which I believe you did as well. I'm just going to scroll through to here that these units that are being earmarked as affordable will be set at the 50 to 80% AMI level for a period of 30 years.
Correct. Applicant agrees to that.
Great. Okay, so that would be my testimony. Does the board have any questions for me? Or do you want me to go over conditions?
Does anyone have any questions at this time for either Mallory or for any of the experts?
No.
Okay, so standard conditions here, the only additional would be that the applicant continued to work with Division of Affordable Housing and they provide us with a copy of the finalized Affordable Housing Agreement prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy or temporary certificate of occupancy. And I did share these with Jim earlier today, so he has reviewed them.
And the applicant agrees.
Okay, great. So with that, we see this as pretty consistent with the original approval. I think the addition of the two affordable units with the increase of the five units in the overall density helps to offset that increase and staff recommends approval with conditions.
I'd like to make a motion on Z20-036 for approval with staff conditions.
Second.
Okay, on the motion for approval with conditions, Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown, I believe this is my first time with you, Commissioner Brown, so nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes, I would like, I really am glad to see a couple of the units being made affordable housing. I vote yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
I agree with Commissioner McCormick. I definitely like to see affordable housing, so I vote yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes.
And Chairman Jacobs?
No, I don't like the idea of putting more units into the same space. I would have much preferred, I'm happy to see affordable units, but ask us for more height. I'd rather give you that than shove more people into smaller units.
Okay, so that's six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries with conditions.
And thank you very much.
Good luck with the project. Thank you. I hope not to see more like this.
Thank you, Vinnie, for finding a way to make it happen.
Okay, I'm still here, so great. Nice to see you, Jim. Take care.
Good night.
Okay, so we're going to proceed with case Z20-034. The address is 336 Fifth Street. Applicant is Daniel Victor.
Chairman, I'm promoting the architects for this project. This is a pro se. And the applicant.
So Bridget, while they're setting up, why don't we mark their notices? We have their affidavit, proof of service, notice of publication. We'll mark that, Bridget, as A1.
Okay, that's A1 for this application. And Mr. Victor, are you talking or is your architect going to talk?
I believe my architect is going to speak.
I'm not sure which one that is, that's why.
It would be.
I, yes, it's me.
Ahmed, okay.
I just.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and state and spell your full name for the record.
Sure, it's Ahmed Amara, A-H-M-E-D. My last name is E-M-A-R-A.
And Mr. Victor, you agree to have, I'm not sure how that goes with, there's no attorney then, so.
I do agree to have my architect speak for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Ms. White, sorry.
Yeah.
Vinnie, well, you can go forward.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vinnie, are you going to say something?
No, no, I was just going to say Mr. Victor said, no. No.
Okay. Mr. Amara, can you briefly give the board a summary of your qualifications? And if you have a current license?
Yeah, I do have a current license in New Jersey. I have testified before this board a few times in the past. And yes, my license is current in NJ, in New Jersey.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to share my screen and go over the project. Can you see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so briefly, just a quick location synopsis. This is 336 Fifth Street. It's on the corner of Fifth Street and Monmouth. This is the house if any of the board members live around this area or are familiar with it. And the application today is for an extension of the rear deck of this deck right here. So I'm going to just jump into the project. The zoning chart right here, the variance we're asking for is a rear setback variance. The lot is undersized. The depth is 50 instead of 100, which is the minimum. And we have the, we have the minimum width, we have the width of 25, but the depth, again, is 50 instead of 100. The existing first floor setback is 13 feet, three inches. And on the second floor, we're at 10 feet. What we're proposing is expansion of the rear deck, which will take the, which will, the setback on the first floor will remain the same, but the setback on the second floor will be one foot, one inch. And I'll go through the project to explain what we're doing and how we're doing it. So this is the existing site plan of the property. You'll see that this is 50 feet deep by 25. And right now, there is a paved driveway in the back with an existing curb cut. And four trees that are not in very good shape and also the pits are sort of destroyed and damaged. So what we're proposing for the site plan specifically is to bring up the landscaped area to 254 square feet. There is a 20% lot area landscape requirement, which would put us at 250. We're slightly over. The existing right now is about 150 square feet. We're repaving this area with pervious pavers and also leaving gaps so we can help also with the stormwater mitigation on the site here. We will be, we will be increasing the size of the four tree pits to bring them up to the New Jersey, the Jersey City forestry standards. One of these, it's just to mention this early on, one of these tree pits is actually straddling the lot line between our lot and the neighbor's lot. Our neighbor has been very cooperative throughout the process. We've had discussions with her about the design and including the tree because some of the sidewalk, if we're doing this, some of the sidewalk in front of her property will have to be ripped up and repaired and fixed and she's on board with that. I believe Danny has spoken to her. In terms of the, there's no interior work proposed, I should mention that. In terms of the second floor where the variance is happening, this is the existing deck right here with the stairs and this is what's being proposed, that that goes back to here. And the stair essentially remains in the same area. The wall on this side is going to be a six-foot wall, which will have greenery up it. This is, this is something that came out of discussions with the neighbor to create some privacy for both my client and also our neighbor for her backyard and also for the, for her bedroom windows on the second floor. We're proposing shrubs along Monmouth right here to create privacy actually for the deck. And this enclosure here, which is the same in plan here, this is, this is something that we're creating here as a sunroom. So the by-fold doors will open and create this as a big outdoor space or they could enclose it and use it maybe in the winter. This is the elevation from Monmouth. So the deck, instead of basically ending here, it's going back to here. And this is the other elevation with the six-foot wall from the rear. This is a quick visual for what's happening three dimensionally. The deck is this with this wall here and here, and this is an idea of what we want to do for the walls. And this is something that the client is, that the owner is very much on board with and really likes. This is a realistic rendering for what the proposal looks like. This is what's existing right now. And we're basically taking the same design of the railing and extending it. This wall here is the other change that's happening to the exterior of the building. This is a wood wall right now that is rotted and damaged in many places. And the owner would like to update this wall with wood also, panel that looks like that. And this is a sample of the wood panel. I should mention that we're asking for this variance, we're asking for this variance to be granted because the lot is excessively shallow, as I've mentioned in the beginning. We're not going to be creating any negative criteria as the area under the deck is already pervious to right now, impervious, I should say, right now. By actually doing what we're doing to the site plan, as I've mentioned earlier, I'm just going to go back to that here. And here versus the old one, we're creating more landscaped area. So we're helping with that and also the deck will still be pervious itself, allowing water through it down to this area. And in terms of the block itself, this is the property that we're talking about right here. And this is where the property line ends at that garage building. The buildings along the block are all inconsistent in terms of depth, but most of them have the 100-foot depth. Ours, again, is 50. And in terms of this area here, this is where the deck extension would have. I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Amara. Are there any other, do you anticipate anyone else speaking on this application?
I mean, I think I would just ask Danny to speak to why this is important for them and his conversation with his neighbor, because this is an important part of the discussion while we're designing this, because again, as I've mentioned, the deck expansion here, the main, the main point here that we wanted to be heard by the neighbor is in terms of overlooking her backyard. So this is something that we've gone back and forth with Nisha and, you know, she had great input and it actually made the project better. So Danny, if you just want to speak to that?
Hi, everybody. So I also have.
Mr. Victor, would you raise your right hand if you swore?
Sure.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state and spell your full legal name.
First name is Daniel, D-A-N-I-E-L. Last name is Victor, V-I-C-T-O-R.
Thank you.
So I was saying, I also have my wife here, Amelie. I definitely, we've been working on this for quite some time. We plan on having a family. We've been, well, I've been in Jersey City since 2009 and when we decided that we were going to get married and have a family, we decided to get a real home rather than live in a high-rise. to get a real home rather than live in a high-rise. And we noticed that we needed extra space since we're planning on having a family. I also, as Ahmed has mentioned, I've spoken to my neighbor, Nisha. I believe she's on hold or watching. As she's for, she's okay with everything we're, we're doing, and she actually added some great suggestions that made the idea even better. And then the other neighbor who's, who owns this garage right next door to me, he's supportive of it as well. They own the funeral home. His name is Ken, I forget his last name. It's a, it's a long one. But, um, yeah, so that's pretty much the gist of everything that's going on. We need to space, you know, to be able to entertain our, our new family that we're gonna work on.
Thank you. Does anyone from the board have any questions for either Mr. Amara, Mr. Victor? Do you wanna hold off until we see if there's anyone from the community first, maybe the neighbors?
I just have a really quick question, cuz I'm familiar with that block. I used to live on it a million years ago. But on that block between Monmouth and Jersey, is it correct to say, I think, most of the, most of the houses along that part of Fifth Street, they have the backyard and then it abuts up against the embankment? And in your case, you have this garage building?
Correct. I've worked, actually, so, so, so we've worked on several projects on Fifth Street and in this area, and you're absolutely correct. Most of the properties there butt up against the embankment, and they have, you know, for better or worse, 30 to 40 feet of backyard, sometimes more. The older buildings have more than 40 feet. The newer ones that have additions have maybe 35. We just got one actually through planning not long ago. So yes, that's happening. In this case, there's the garage, which actually encroaches onto Danny's property about a foot. And then there's the alleyway that's right along the embankment wall.
Yeah, because I'm just trying to envisage how it could possibly impact other properties, but I, but it's very different here because you have that gigantic garage in, in the backyard, literally. So I, I get it. I'm just trying to make sure I'm visualizing it the right way. Thank you. Thanks for clarification.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions at this time? Is there anyone from the public who would like to have a comment or question?
I see two hands raised before or one right now. So if you have a question or a comment, click raise hand at the bottom of your screen, or if you're calling in, dial star nine. Sorry, now I think we actually have the applicant's neighbor, Nisha, raising her hand, so I am going to unmute you. Please state and spell your full name for the record and provide your address, please.
Sure, it's Nisha, N-I-S-H-A, and the last name is Ahmed, A-H-A-M-E-D. And I'm at 334 and a half Fifth Street.
And Ms. Ahmed, do you verify that you are who you stated you are and that you will consider your testimony as under oath?
I do.
Thank you.
Excellent. So thank you. I just wanted to concur with everything that Danny and Ahmed were saying. They were super accommodating and talking to me several times about the concerns that I had, and I think the design is really great, and I feel very comfortable with it now. And I really appreciate their effort. And the only thing I would say is just regarding the, the tree in the front. I think, you know, the tree may be on my side of the fence, but I'm thrilled if they would like to redo the tree well around it, and we can coordinate about how we would do that, so.
Okay, is that something that has been discussed with the applicant and that they're agreeable?
Correct.
Yeah, the sidewalk, we've discussed it, and we've discussed, I just wanna add specifically, the sidewalk in that area is damaged and it's up and down, and I think the tree roots are just bringing it up, so it's, it's gonna be for the, you know, for the, it's beneficial for both Nisha and Danny to do that, and Danny has definitely, you know, spoken to me about this, and he's, he's, he wants to do it.
Okay, great. Are there any other questions, comments from the public?
One more hand raised. Their name is MJ, so I'm gonna unmute you. Please state and spell your full name and provide your address, please.
Hi, this weekend here?
We can hear you.
Okay, we couldn't hear you before.
If you have a question or a comment, can you state and spell your full name and provide your address, please?
No, no questions or comments. It's just that we couldn't hear you before. Thank you. We can hear you now.
Thank you for the comment. Okay, are there any that we're gonna close the public portion? There's no more questions or comments, right? I assume there's no staff report, is that correct?
I did write a staff report, but just that was already said that this is an undersized lot in terms of depth. Typical lot depth is 100 feet, and this property is half that, at 50 feet, so this has, this property has an existing non-conforming rear yard setback tied to the shallowness of the lot. And they're not requesting to reduce the rear setback on the, on the ground floor. It's just tied to the expansion of the deck on the second floor. So that's what triggers the rear setback and the C variance for the non-conforming structure, because that's pre-existing. So these variances are tied. So it's the opinion of staff that the proposal meets the criteria to be granted a C1 variance due to the shallowness of the lot. And in addition, the applicant, as you heard, they're proposing to conform to the landscaping standards, the R5, by adding what's known as ground cover, which is grouping of low-lying plants throughout the ground floor. They're expanding forest tree pits so they conform with forestry standards while preserving existing trees, which relate to C, adding plaiders to the roof and replacing curbing and sidewalks. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in my staff report dated September 8, 2020. And with that, like I said, staff recommends approval, and if you have any questions or comments, or any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Lindsay, just a quick one, and they agreed on the conditions.
Yes, we did.
I'd like to make a motion for approval on Z 20 dash 034 with staff conditions.
Second it.
All right, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner McCormick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Shadid?
Yes.
Vice Chair Donnelly?
Yes, I like this house very much, and I like this design even more, so I, I think it's, I think it's terrific. I think it's a lovely design, and I love the landscaping improvement, so good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chairman Jacobs?
Yes, good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Motion carries all in favor with conditions.
Good night.
Good night.
Great.
A good night, thank you.
Thank you, good luck. Bridget, do you wanna keep going?
We can go for a little while longer.
Okay, we are proceeding with case Z, sorry, Z 20 dash 009. The address is 24 Roane Avenue.
I feel like we're missing someone. We lose Vinnie again?
I don't see Vinnie, that's a good point.
Sorry, I'd be the bearer of Wi-Fi news. In the meantime, I'll promote to the attorney and Hoop D, who is the architect for this case. I believe Vinnie was present for that last presentation, but.
Oh boy. Yeah, I think he was there for the presentation.
Yeah.
Tanya, have you connected with Vinnie?
You want to pull up the record, Josh, for a moment?
Yeah, let's go off the record, sorry. And Lindsay, can you pull up Chuck as well? Let's just say, I think we need to call the meeting.
For what it's worth, it's my anniversary tonight, so you know what boat I'm in.
Happy anniversary.
Anniversary, congrats.
I did promote Chuck.
Thank you. Bridget, do you wanna go on the rec, back on the record?
You did go back on the record.
Oh, great. So Chuck, Stephen, there's three applications remaining today. I, I think it's not advisable that we continue. We intermittently have board council. I, I leave it to you, you know, whether you think that we should have a special meeting to, to address these three cases to alleviate a potential backlog. But I, I think we should end the meeting for today, but, but at least wanted, if either of you wanted to say something on the record, give you the opportunity.
I'll go first, I guess. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, yeah, I understand the difficulties we're having tonight, so yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily, you know, think it's a good idea to try to push it, and we'll, we, you know, I think it's better for my client and, and the board to just, you know, push it to another date so that we can, you know, we can regroup then. So I don't know, are we going to try to carry to the next meeting, or, and so we can preserve our notices? Or are you looking to do, as you said, a special meeting?
Lindsay, you know the schedule better than anyone?
I mean, we do have a long agenda right now for the 24th. But I don't know if everyone has already noticed for that, because the deadline is actually technically Monday. But just due to the postal service being a bit slower, people have been noticing earlier the property, the notice in time. And it probably would be interesting to the Jersey Journal today or tomorrow as well. So I guess it's just more on staff's end to figure out who has not noticed, and if not, we would just ask them to hold off. And those that that have noticed will just have to figure out amongst ourselves which ones should be listed as carried, like knowing where, like just realistically, you know, we're not gonna get to certain I believe it makes sense to prioritize cases that were scheduled.
Yeah, exactly. Lindsay, that was, what I was gonna say is I, I would wanna make sure to not disadvantage these applicants at all. If they, I, I would think that it would make sense to preserve their notices and have them be first on the agenda for the next meeting. But if they want to, give them the option of having a special meeting at a sooner date than that. If that's, if that's feasible, you know, I would wanna make sure that, that they have the most advantageous position for their clients possible. And, and maybe there is some that are on the calendar for the next, you know, next agenda that we can move to a, to a later date.
So I, I don't, I don't think a special meeting earlier than the 24th would be possible if we have to notice for it and to not notice for it. I think we would have to know that date right now to announce it on the record, and I'm, I'm sure that's something we can't do, so I, I think the 24th would be probably the earliest date.
Yeah, I'm with Steve, and I, I prefer just move it to the 24th so we'll preserve our notices. I don't think you could get anything done between now and then. And as long as we keep our spot in the line, you know, I think we're good.
Okay.
I'm mesmerized by Commissioner Donnelly's background over here.
So Lindsay just lost her internet too. Her power went out.
Okay.
I think, I think we should just.
Who is the old, the new Tanya, so I don't know what that makes me. Yes. Yes, I've been multitasking during these deliberations.
We're now the best-sized city in America with sporadic power.
Nick, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I, I agree with my distinguished colleagues here. 24th would be fine.
Okay. Unless anyone else has, has anything else to add, I, I think with that, we are just concluding the meeting. And we'll see everyone on the 24th. Does anyone else have anything?
Nick, do you make a motion to close?
A second.
It's unanimous.
There's unanimous.
Water's a hole.
Take care.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, at least we don't have to go home in the rain.